Thanks. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 at sequenza, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packard, and the Trenton Times on January 9th, 2025. It is also distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board deserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 168 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this in-person meeting that proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 38.1. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high schools, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Those otherwise are considered abstentions. In the event this statute is amended, the Wall should take precedence over this by law.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Beth Barron?
Here.
Adam Bierman?
Here.
Mara Franceschi?
Here.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Here.
Susan Kanter?
Here.
Ari Mizel?
Here.
Chris Santarpio?
Here.
Catherine Lara?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Can I get a motion for the adoption of the minutes for February 11th, 2025? Mara, second, Ari?
I'm having a little technical difficulty here.
Take your time. I, mine just went out, too.
Is it AWS again?
I don't know.
I think it's me.
No, my server went out, too. Let's see if it comes back. It's not coming back. I have paper, though, so we will go on. All right, is it back? Mine's back.
No, but it didn't. Hold on.
Okay. Take your time.
I can't save the roll call here. The heck? Nope, I got it. Hold on. I got it. Okay. All right, just, we'll go, get a motion in a second. I'll just do it old-fashioned.
Okay, so it was Mara, second was Ari?
Great. Daphna?
Yes.
Or Susan?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Debbie? Mara?
Yes.
Eleanor?
Yes.
Ari?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. We're good, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Welcome this evening. We are thrilled to welcome you all. And the first item up on the agenda is the appointment of Margarita Baldeo as Assistant Superintendent of Special Services. So those of you who are inside baseball know that that was a director position, and the Board and the administration thought it was in the best interest of the kids that we serve to elevate this position to Assistant Superintendent of Special Services. We interviewed four outstanding candidates. Margarita rose to the top, and her being a bilingual educator in Spanish really excited the entire committee. So, oh, hold on. Can I get a motion, please? I'm so excited. Beth, second, Eleanor. I'm not going to start over. Just everything I said. You know, as, as, as a parent of a child who had an IP in the district, special education is my passion. We do it really well in this district, but there's always room for improvement. And, and the committee, Dr. Foster, believe that Margarita is the one to take us there. So she joins us from Upper Freehold Regional School District, where she spent the past three years as a Director of Special Services. Previously, she was a supervisor of Student Services in Hamilton Township and a Child Study Team member. She's a licensed clinical social worker, and she's currently pursuing her doctorate in social work, clinical social work at Rutgers. She also holds a bachelor's and master's degree in clinical social work from Rutgers. We're so excited to welcome you to the district. We have high expectations, so no pressure, but we have every, every belief that you will exceed them. The Board is committed to our students, and the kids in our district, there are kids who are always going to do really well. And then there's kids who need supports, and we need to do better for those kids. And so part of that is bringing on someone like you, and we're so excited that you're going to be, you're bilingual, and you'll be able to communicate with our bilingual families in a way that they haven't been able to been communicated before. You shared that every special ed parent will get your cell phone number. I'm first. No, just kidding. Not everyone. Not everyone. But just like your passion for children came through, and just be yourself and things are going to be great. So that's all I have to say for now. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, we, we are really excited. We, she, she's going to be the light that we need to bring and enhance all of our student learning, and so we're just really excited to welcome you. And I look forward to working with you for a month before, or less than a month, maybe. But I know the district is in great hands, so welcome.
And, and Margarita is so excited to start. She'll be starting on May 27th, so she wants to get in here right away. And I just want to say that Margarita met with the Personnel Committee, and after you left, two of the other four board members were crying. Margarita also brought her parents here tonight. She's first generation. She, she said that, you know, this is something her father always wanted, and so we're thrilled to have you both here tonight. And we know you're local to the community, and we welcome you to the Princeton community after we vote. Hold on. All right, Mr. Bolden.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Ari Mizel?
Yes.
Chris Santarpio?
Yes.
Catherine Lara?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Welcome to Princeton.
So I wrote something, and I brought it with me because I'm very, like, you know, nervous and emotional, so I didn't want to lose my thoughts. So I would like to express my deepest gratitude to Dr. Michael La Sosa, Dr. Kathy Foster, the Board of Education, and the Princeton Public School Community for trusting with me with our students' educational and social-emotional well-being. It's truly an honor to step into such an important role, where I have the privilege of ensuring that every student has access to equitable and inclusive opportunities that will empower them to reach their fullest potential. I am excited to embark on this new chapter and committed to advancing the success and well-being of every student in our district. Thank you for your incredible, for this incredible opportunity. Thank you to my mentor, Mrs. Nancy Whelan, who's here this evening to show me her support, and thank you to my parents, William and Carmen Guevara, who is Ari, who are also here with me tonight. Through their strength, sacrifices, and support, they instilled in me the values of perseverance, compassion, and service to others. Their guidance has shaped who I am truly today, and I carry their lessons with me at every step of my journey. And now I would like to translate that for the Spanish-speaking families in our community. Me gustaría expresar mi más profunda gratitud al doctor Michael La Sosa, la doctora Kathy Foster, la junta de educación, y a la comunidad de las escuelas públicas de Princeton por confiar en mí para el bienestar educativo y socioemocional de nuestros estudiantes. Es un verdadero honor asumir este importante rol donde tengo el privilegio de garantizar que cada estudiante tenga acceso a oportunidades equitativas y inclusivas que les permiten alcanzar su máximo potencial. Estoy emocionada de comenzar este nuevo capítulo y comprometida con el éxito y el bienestar de cada estudiante en nuestro distrito. Gracias por este, esta increíble oportunidad. Quiero agradecer a mi mentora señora Nancy Whelan por estar aquí para mostrar su apoyo. También quiero agradecerle a mis padres William y Carmen Guevara quienes me acompañan esta noche a través de su fortaleza, sacrificios y apoyo. Me inculcaron los valores de la perseverancia, compasión, y el servicio a los demás. Su guía ha moldeado la persona que soy y llevo conmigo sus enseñanzas en cada paso de mi camino. Gracias.
I, I did also want to say there's cake. We have cake and coffee for everyone after the meeting. If, if you want to stay around, it might be a long meeting. But we're just really excited to welcome you to the district, and if, if not today, there'll be other opportunities for- You did great! You did great! You, you showed everyone, you know, why we're so excited. Thank you. All right, so now moving on, we're going to try to move this along. We're having a presentation by Jackie Katz. Is Jackie Katz here? Hi, Jackie! And if you could, and they're students, but they didn't tell me their names, so are they here?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, well, come on up. Yes, please. So Jackie Katz and her, Jackie Katz is the Science Supervisor, and her three students just won some awards. So we always like to highlight kids because that's why we're all here, but it's always good to remind us, ourselves of that. So thank you for coming.
Well, thank you, and, and thank you to the team that rallied around all my annoying emails. But this crew, really, I'm just honored to be in, able to work with them. They were all in the top 300 of the Regeneron Student Science Talent Search, which is a national talent search. Thousands of kids apply. And what's truly amazing about this is the award is really looking for, like, humans immersed in science. We're not looking at a singular science project. And of course, they all have incredible singular science projects from, you know, melting points of chemicals and ankle replacement surgery and microbiomes of jumping spiders, like, truly incredible. But like, these humans live it. They live it, they breathe it, they're curious, they ask questions, they think critically, and that's what Regeneron saw in them. That's what I was able to see every day, working with them as students, so we are oh so proud. Amy and Ben were both top 300, along with Uri. Uri then went on to top 40, was in DC for the last week. Truly incredible. I, I just told Ben earlier, went on my footnote for the Nobel Prize later on. He will remember this day, and I, I pass that on to Uri and Amy because I am sure it will be about, but really cool. If you have a chance to nerd out about science, call these guys anytime.
Can you give us a really brief summary of, like, what your interests were and what, what the prize was awarded for?
Do you want to give, like, a quick sentence?
Uh, sure, like about our projects?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it could be not so quick, but yeah.
It's all good. We've, we've done this enough times.
Okay.
Exactly. So my personal project, I was looking at, I was using computer vision on x-rays of ankles to be able to make measurements, and then later we're going to be using it to make predictions on ankle replacement surgeries with the hopes of increasing the accuracy of the actual surgeries themselves and increasing the, how effective the process actually is. And then in the future, looking towards preventing potential failures, because like any surgery, they, especially newer ones, there's really a high chance of it not taking, and obviously that can cause many issues in the future. So really trying to see what we can do to prevent that sort of thing from happening and, you know, help some people be in a little less pain and spend a little less money on surgery and just be able to live their lives.
That's fantastic. And you're a senior? Are you a senior?
Yes.
Wow. I can't wait to see the things you do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Amy?
Hello, I'm Amy, and my project was on predicting the melting temperature of chemical compounds using machine learning. So basically, this has a lot of applications and obviously, like, construction and such, but also in designing efficient fuel cells for clean energy, which is something we really need in this day and age. And another thing I did with my project was I tried to find out, a little sciency, but the different properties that affected melting temperature the most. So hopefully this can be, you know, advance the studies of material science. But I guess in terms of my scientific interests, I also, I obviously love machine learning and AI. I actually did a previous project on predicting my dog's behavior using machine learning. It had an 80% accuracy rate, so I will say it kind of worked. Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to talk to her.
I could use that. We'll talk.
Come to my house.
And what year are you, Amy? Are you a senior or junior?
Yes, I'm a senior.
Senior, too? Okay.
We're all seniors.
Well, best, best of luck to you.
Hello. So I speak two languages, Spanish and English, but my first language is Spanish. So I'm very happy being here. Thank you for inviting us here and, well, my project, it's called How the Lion Becomes a Lamb. And that means, well, it's like a transferal bacterial from the ant larvae to the spider. And I wanted to know how a spider that is like, that was designed to be carnivore becomes vegetarian, and because I wanted to know how, like, a body that it's like, like, designed naturally, like, being like, have to, like, hunt and like, to eat, like, more, like, insects, how this spider could actually be able to survive, like, just based on material plan? So that's why I have this project, and I'm very happy, and thank you all.
And what year are you?
I'm sorry?
Are you also a senior?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I just got the memo.
Yeah.
All right, well. Well, congratulations and best of luck. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Jackie. All right, next up is Mr. McMichael. And so our February meeting was on February 11th, and it snowed that night, so we cut all our presentations so our staff could get home quick, so we have a lot in this meeting. Mr. McMichael is going to give us a presentation on social-emotional learning and preventing HIV. So take it away.
Thank you very much for inviting me, and if next time I could not be after our amazing students, that would be awesome. I have no idea what they even just said. I, I can't train my own dog, so maybe I'll talk to that young lady. So I, I believe there's a, another part of the agenda tonight where colleagues will be talking about the strategic goals. So, about you? Okay. So this ties into strategic goal number two, wellness, inclusion, and supports for all. And I'm here tonight to, we love our acronyms in education, so SEL being social-emotional learning, so going right from the hard sciences into our feelings and such. So I'll go really quickly tonight, even though I am very honored anytime I get to talk about the work of the counselors, because, you know, they may be small in number, but they're outsized, I'd like to think, in their impact across the district. So the first few slides are about training. So suffice it to say, every single staff member is trained on our anti-bullying legislation. You know, New Jersey prides a tough on having some of the toughest laws in the country. But I'd really like to focus on the positive tonight. But one slide with the training I'd like to point out, where it says ABS training at the top, are anti-bullying specialists. The ones that are listed on that slide are, have gone through, training through New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association, which is $500 a person, and it's 16 hours. It is extensive, it is in-depth, you will basically be an expert at the end of that. So that is one of the slides that I had for you this evening, as well some other, oh, here we go. Okay, keep going. That's the one I was talking about. You can see almost all of our ABSs went through it within the last year, and everybody has gone through it at some point. And then the next slide talks about opportunities provided by the New Jersey State Bar Foundation, and then the New Jersey Department of Education on the next slide. So basically, what I'm demonstrating to you here is, I take it upon myself to make sure that all of our folks are aware of training opportunities so they can stay on top of their game and make sure that they are well-versed in the law, you know, inside and out, so they can support our students when they are, you know, wrapped up in, in these HIBs, which, you know, can be challenging. All right, so we're going to shift gears now and just focus on the great work that the counselors are doing, K to 12, to try to be proactive. How do we get in front of this stuff? How do we just try to teach kindness, empathy, understanding, resilience, all of these fun SEL things that, you know, we push into classrooms and we hold special events for? So just allow me a few minutes. I will be brief, we'll go through it. So the four elementary buildings are up first. Community Park, they're just in alphabetical order. They're doing kindness in the classroom this year, which is through the Random Acts of Kindness Foundation. This was free to the district. It is a Castle-approved, Tier One evidence-based social-emotional learning curriculum. So, you know, a whole lot of bullet points there on the right. If anybody wants to hear more about this, I'm happy to point you in the direction of Miss, Mrs. Liz Cameron at CP, the counselor there, or I will be happy to answer any questions about anything on the presentation this evening. All right, next we will go to Johnson Park, where we have Ms. Kristen Whitmore, who is the newest member of the elementary counseling team. She is only in her second year, but was an experienced counselor in the Robbinsville School District, and she hit the ground running. She also happened to be trained by a fabulous person to my left at this table here, Dr. Cissé Stens. So we know that, you know, Kristen was in great hands for her first year with us here in Princeton. She came up with all of this stuff on here that just out of her brain, all of, you know, her expertise and jumping into a new community, you know, it was great. Her coffee with the counselor was actually my first observation of her, and Angela was there supporting her, and, you know, it was really just a great morning to have some coffee, sit down here, there's cake here later, right? So what brings people together better than food and drinks? So it was a great way for her to, I think that was like in October, it was very early in her time here, and it was just a great way to throw open the doors to the school, welcome people in, talk about her role as a counselor and all the great work she's doing there. All right, Littlebrook School. So just in November of this school year, you heard all about Character Strong, and you're going to hear a lot more about Character Strong because Littlebrook piloted the program for us, and it will be expanding to all four elementary schools next year, which we are very excited about. Actually sent some emails today just to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. We would like our counselors, principals, and to be, you know, ready for this, and then to be able to turnkey it to all of their staffs in the four buildings before the end of this school year. We want to be able to come back in September, hit the ground running, and off we go. So if, for anybody that's interested, if you go back, you know, these meetings are fabulously streamed and recorded, so you can see Ms. Walters and Mr. Ramirez's presentation, which they did a fantastic job with. And that'll give you a hint of what's to come in the other three buildings starting next school year. Riverside School, Mr. Ben Samara, who we all know pretty well, I think. Similar to Ms. Whitmore, just has a lot of experience, a lot of expertise. You know, nobody's winging anything. He just gave me some samples there to show you, things he does with his students in classroom settings, you know, his personality, his, his infectious nature, his easy demeanor. You know, the kids love him at Riverside. He's especially been a great support to, to Mr. Akthau, the new principal there, and they're, they've like, they're like two peas in a pod, the two of them. They're a team, and, and I love it. Princeton Middle School, so we're going to move up sixth through eighth grade. Another opportunity for folks here, if you didn't see the board meeting on, in March, as well as November. So I think that's really, you know, amazing that the Board has invited three folks between elementary and middle school to hear directly from them, and you just see that passion. You know, when Angelo Costegliola came up for Streak of Kindness, which has been an amazing initiative, I have that sticker on my computer, on my desk. I see it every day, and I love it. And then to hear Ms. Steele and Mr. Burr, who, you know, Ms. Steele in a leave replacement position, brand new to our district, first time she's ever worked here, and she is, you know, carrying this Wingman program forward with Mr. Burr. It's, it's been amazing to watch. So, you know, the slides here start with Streak of Kindness. We go into some things that they just do as a matter of course, it's just part of the practice at PMS, and then we go into the Wingman Program. That board meeting was October 29th. You have to fast forward a little bit to the 26th minute if you would like to see that. I put a note up there on the slide. Well, you, you don't have to, they can watch the first 26. And then, you know, for those of you who have not met me before, my office is physically located at Princeton High School, so we'll move up now to the ninth through 12th grades. And this is where, you know, we have different things throughout the year that are building-wide. Week of Respect, Spirit Week, pep rallies, Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, right, where we really have these cultural celebrations that are building-wide. If any of you were here for the Black History Month presentation last month, it was absolutely fabulous. The gym was packed, it was rocking, it was fun, it was exciting, and it was also very informative. And we're looking forward to, to more of those to come. Small group sessions, you know, the Sunday Night Message from Principal Burge. You know, the community, I think, loves hearing those and just being well-informed of knowing what's going on at the high school. Now, to get down to some granular programs that come through the counseling office, the sophomore leadership team, which is run by Mrs. Diana Ligus and Mrs. Simborsky, it's a group of sophomores, obviously. They are basically our ambassadors, if you like to think of it that way. They go to Princeton Charter School, they go to Cranberry, they go to the middle school to help students get excited about coming to high school. Obviously, our, you know, our friends across the street, maybe not as big of a jump as our friends from Cranberry and Charter, but we want all eighth-grade students to feel ready to make that transition to high school, and they're a big part of that. And they bring a nice group of, I'd say about 20 students with them, and, you know, the, the little kids love seeing the big kids, right? So it's a great program, and then they have done some vaping awareness, they're hanging flyers in all the bathrooms, and then they're going to move on to, you know, dating violence awareness, they're going to be doing bulletin boards around the high school, just to raise awareness. Write It Down, Poetry Counseling Group, run by Mrs. Rayhan Garcia. She is, she is our wordsmith, she is our editor, she is our go-to with grammatical stuff, you know, she is, I, I look to her all the time to make sure I'm speaking correctly. And she has this, you know, Write It Down, so using writing and her expertise and her strength in this area as a way to deal with, you know, feelings, emotions, frustrations, challenges. And she does a fantastic job giving students with similar proclivities an outlet for her emotional turmoils. A new one, new to Princeton High School this year, through a new hire, Ms. Beth Zeta Matos is called Ruling Our Experiences, a girls' empowerment group run by a national nonprofit organization called Rocks, Ruling Our Experiences. She calls the students that are now part of this program her rock stars, and we love that, it's so fitting. She just, she took this on herself, Ms. Matos ran with it, applied for a grant to be trained, went to Ohio for three days to go through that training program, not a dime out of our pockets to do that when it's normally $1,500. She's just a go-getter, she's ambitious, she's energetic, and she was able to get a group of students up and running. I think that's all from December till now, and the group is now underway and running, and it's amazing. Last two, and then I'm out of here, are another fabulous colleague at the high school, Ms. Napurna Shaw. We all know her, we love her, she does a fantastic, some head nods over here, nice, right? Right? Love it. She is amazing, amazing. I actually have to tell her to say no to things because she says yes to everything, and she's doing too much. So her junior college workshops, that was a transition last year that we implemented, and we carried forward this year with some slight tweaks to make, I think, make it better. She is currently in the fourth of a series of five of these workshops. She meets with every single junior five times throughout the spring, and then she will meet with all the seniors in the fall, and that's how she has 800 of her students, as she likes to call them. So the junior college workshops, helping students, self-acceptance, you know, it's, it's about this, we think of it as a process, but I, there's a, a couple famous, well, famous, that's nerdy, some college admissions folks who like to talk of it as a journey, right? It's for these young people. It's self-exploration, and they learn, I hope they learn a lot about themselves and what's important to them as they go through this. And she, I can think of no better guide than Mrs. Shaw. So lastly, student alumni panel. I was in the room in PHS when she brought, it was about eight students back, and they sat in front of current high school students, and they were able to ask questions and answer questions. And Ms. Shaw and I just stood there and watched, and it was amazing. And to be able to provide, you know, something to look to, something to aspire to. You were in these halls not that long ago, and now, you know, you're wearing these shirts of these well-known colleges, and you're successful. And one young lady was a senior computer science major. I was like, hey, we might want to hire you, you know? And what are you doing next year? I called Mrs. Brennan, the supervisor. I said, we might need to hire her. So that is a very quick, I'm sorry for talking so fast, but I know it's a busy night. There's a lot on the agenda. I just appreciate the opportunity to shine a light on the counseling staff, K to 12, and all the great work they do day in, day out for the students of this amazing school district.
We appreciate you. Thank you for coming. If, is there anything you need? You have a lot of kids in the district, and, you know, I know that these are trying time, especially with the seniors, and they're not coming to school, you know, because it's senioritis. I know because I have one. So, you know, I know it's, you know, we're going to pass the budget tonight, but, you know, is there, is there anything, if you had a wish list, something in the next few years you want the board to consider?
Now I get more time, right?
Yeah.
I, I've, I pester Dr. Cecil Stents quite a bit. We had a nice, long conversation on Friday, so I have, I have expressed some wishes to her, so I thank you for that. I do, speaking of Ms. Shaw, right at the end there, right? I remember we presented at SAC in September, and you said, man, we might need two of you. And I think you were maybe in jest, you were saying that, but I keep bringing it up. I keep saying, hey, remember when Ms. Kennel said, maybe we need two? So I really do appreciate that. I, I, I have and will continue to communicate to Dr. Cecil Stents.
And Dr. LaSousa for the next budget is behind you. But, you know, 800, 800 children for, and having one college counselor, that's a lot. And I know Mrs. Shaw is tremendous from my own experience, but that's a lot to put on one person. And if we want to make sure that all kids have, you know, the help they need, you know, it's something the board has been considering for many years, you know?
I would say I've been very, it's an opportunity for me to express gratitude. So I mentioned Ms. Mattos tonight, right? So the board agreed to bring her on this year. It was a fabulous addition for us. I mean, you know, you never really know with interviews, right? So sometimes you get lucky and...
Except one, yeah.
She is just so great.
Two.
So, thank you.
Yeah. But thank you, Mr. McMichael, and we're so grateful for all you're doing, and we appreciate that you dress up for us.
Oh, yeah.
Very much.
I try.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Foster.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to transition and capitalize on the wonderful programs that are run, you know, under John's leadership with the counselors and all of the building staff members, because, you know, every, every member contributes. And really talk about giving a quick update, and stay tuned because there'll be more next month as well. So as you know, we, believe it or not, we are in the third year of our strategic plan already. And, and we always like to share progress using the data that we collect and then analyze as we then set goals and, you know, make adjustments, revisions, and also celebrate. So we've got a lot to celebrate, and we also know we have more work to do. So I thought it would be fitting tonight to really focus on strategic goal two, which is on the social-emotional wellness of our students. So we'll go through first, I'm sorry, am I, I was talking too fast? No, I'm pretty...
I don't have the presentation.
Oh, I sent it, oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on. We'll get the presentation.
Want to plug in? Do you have it? What is it? You send it to that? I'll find it, hold on.
I'll talk a little. I promise I won't sing.
Give me one second.
One second.
I'll find it.
Yeah.
What time did you send it? What time did you send it?
Does Cass have it? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. All right, it's on its way. So what we're going to do is focus on goal number two, but I will review all of our district priorities because next month I will highlight goal one, three, and four, which are more of the academic measurements. There we go. Okay, great. Thank you.
Just one second, sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Hit the red thing. Then give it a second.
Social-emotional learning. So let me read our promise and our mission and our promise, because this is really grounds the work that we do. We promise to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, compassionate citizens of a global society. So I just want to, again, highlight the four priorities that we've been focused on for the past few years. The first is early years, age three to grade three. The second, which I'll capitalize on tonight, is wellness, inclusion, and support for all. The third is opportunity and achievement for all. And the fourth is preparation for a meaningful life beyond Princeton Public Schools. So tonight, we're going to focus on collective priority two, wellness, inclusion, and support. So I'm going to go through, and preschool is included, and I think it's really important. Those are our earliest learners, and that is where we learn some of our most important skills about kindness, listening to each other, getting along, asking questions. And under Dr. Nasco's leadership this year, she has worked hard to create some family events that really highlight the pre-K families and, in particular, target lower socioeconomic families for accessibility to attend the events. So I'm just going to highlight her, her work here. You can see that she was working with the Climate Change Grant this year, and she was offering also pre-K snippets, they were called, and this, these were a series of short educational virtual family meetings to just help connect families, bring them together, since preschool has many, many locations and buildings. And her next steps will be to continue to expand the pre-K snippets and then other ways to engage our DLI families. So one of the most important measures that we use for this priority, goal number two, is our student wellness survey. It is administered at different times of the year. And so we have the data from, and you can see sort of the spring, winter, spring, winter. So this would be, we're going to highlight the winter, which is the 2024. If you notice, they ask four different questions. But this year, what we've also done is asked some open-ended questions to really explore what kids think about and how they interpret questions, because we know a survey is self-administered. And so it depends on, we get on whatever day a child is feeling, they're going to respond, but they can also give us some specific feedback in writing as well. So I'm going to first show you the data and then just elevate a few of the responses so you can get an idea. So if you look, what it shows is that there was an increase in the four questions, the four statements. My school is a welcoming and safe place to be. I look forward to going to school. When something is really bothering me, there is at least one adult that I can go and talk about the problem. And adults in this school treat students with respect. So you can see there is an increase over, over time from the spring to the winter. If you, if you look, you can see sort of the progression. One of the things that they talked about that they enjoyed most, you could probably guess. Anyone want to guess? Ah, number one, recess. Who doesn't love recess? Friends, gym, and fun projects. But the other thing that they highlighted as well at Community Park is that they said, teachers are really nice, and I feel safe. And so those are really good indicators that, you know, kids feel a sense of belonging. So if you go to the next, you can see some of the takeaways. So what happens is the counselors, together with other staff members and principal and support staff, come together and look at the data and talk about where they want to go. So these are the overarching themes that CP recognized as some of the action that they were taking. And if you noticed in Mr. McMichael's presentation, he talked about the Random Acts of Kindness Foundation. They also launched a CP chant and affirmation. We are kind. We are responsible. We are cooperative. We are in control. I think I need that one. Yeah, we are in control, and we are CP. And then they also have established kindness ambassadors. So they're really working to provide, again, making sure that all kids feel seen and heard. And then you look at other takeaways from that, the monthly, the final Fridays, and World SEL Day. They all had a Be Kind t-shirt off their presentations. And then, of course, they're going to continue to do the spring is coming up, this next climate survey, and also explicit instruction, because that is really important in understanding what does, what does kindness look like, sound like, feel like, as we support teachers and model outcomes. The next is up is JP, Year-to-Year Survey. And again, it's the same four statements, and you can see some increases and decreases. And one of the things that emerged for JP is a concern of probably students, not only across JP, but across many, many schools. And what do you think that is? That they don't like?
Homework.
Yes. I should have, like, prizes. I should have prizes. Homework emerged as a big theme for JP as they worked through. But you can see some of their overarching themes that they, they, they're comfortable that there isn't a trusted adult. And it is interesting because a lot of times they, we have to be explicit in understanding, what does a trusted adult look like, and who are they, and who can they be? And then certainly, they're reviewing this. They have morning meeting. The counselors are embedding social-emotional topics into their lessons. They have the JP connections, and they're continuing with the J-Pals. You can see some of the next steps. We talked, we heard from Jenny Walters from Littlebrook, who piloted Character Strong. Now, all of the elementary schools are adopting Character Strong as a resource for classroom teachers to provide more Tier One supports in the classroom. And then continue to recognize staff, and there are lots of mentor staff for children who they identify. Okay. Next is Littlebrook, same four questions. And again, for Littlebrook, some of the comments that emerged, the overarching themes. Now, this is interesting. So of course, one of the things that was most important is they like seeing their friends, and that's why they like to come to school. But at Littlebrook, they also said, I like studying science and having plenty of time to read. So I want to do a shout-out to Martha Friend, who is, who loves science and does a lot of great science, and all the teachers do, but I wonder if she has a little influence there in Littlebrook. Some of their overarching themes are that they look at the data. Again, they were the pilot for Character Strong. They have responsive classroom. And we heard from Jenny about the Tier Two Character Strong Strategy Groups. And then obviously, they celebrate, which is really cool, the country of the week, which is a lot of fun. So every week, if you go to Littlebrook, they're celebrating another country. Okay? And there's some more takeaways as well. We can post this on the website as well, because I'm going to try to move things along. And then Riverside. So again, the four statements, and you can see there was a little decrease in my school's a welcoming place. Others increased. This is interesting, too, because here at Riverside, some of the themes are what makes me want to go to school? Any guess? You would think recess, friends. They said math. So yay for Riverside math! And, and they don't want to go to school for homework. The other quote that I just loved, one of the students said is, I have friend drama. And, you know, so, so, you know, these earnest feedback, you know, statements are so critical for us and really help us understand what kids are thinking and how we can help support them and make them feel safe and loved, because I think that's what that's all about. You can see some of their actions taken as well. Everybody does morning meeting. Their principal morning rounds. They have upstander values that they've developed at Riverside. Mr. Samara and Mr. Akthau do go in together as a group, as a team, to really talk about what is, what is conflict, how to resolve conflict. And some of their next steps as well is they're going to implement Character Strong and just take a look at some of their mentoring program. We're going to move on to the middle school. And you can see the increases, and there was one, I look forward to going to school decreased a bit. Again, these are middle school students. So one of the things that they said is they look forward to coming to school for the school lunch. Now, I think this is after Pom-Tonian, but I don't know for sure, so we'll have to confirm that. But they don't, they, they, what they were using, and this is their quote, this is massive amounts of work and homework, so that's what they don't want. Massive, they used. So overarching things, they've really worked hard to do a lot of cultural connections this year. They had some special celebrations and a day's student leadership with, we know, the Wingman and streaks of kindness. And they are working to really develop relationships within the houses this year and obviously, respect student to student, staff to staff, and staff to staff. And there are some of their pieces there that they've listed with their Wingman. And then last one is, oh, wait, am I, okay, Princeton High School. Now, maybe I was going to say Nick, and Maya can help us as well, give their own feedback. But you can see there's a little decrease from the winter. And one of the motivating factors, this is what someone wrote, is friends and that I love to learn. So there is a lot of value in learning, but we heard overarching theme was mental health and workload stress. What do you think? Is that fairly accurate? Not putting you on the spot, but, you know, here we go.
I actually had a conversation with Ms. Burge about this a few weeks ago. And I think she said something really interesting about, I think it kind of always declines more as they start to, like, choose classes, and they take those classes, and then they realize it's a little bit too much from the handle. So I think, especially with, like, the enjoying going to school, I think, it's definitely about, like, maybe having greater, like, balancing that, like, I don't know, like, there's a fine line between just enough to handle and a little bit too much, so.
Exactly. Yeah.
I mean, high school isn't meant to be easy. And I think that the best thing we can do, and that we do very well, is support students who are challenging themselves. And I think that we have a school environment that doesn't encourage students to challenge themselves. And like we saw with the Science Awards earlier, they're doing a wonderful job at that. We're really excellent. But I think the degree to which we invest ourselves in our coursework can be stressful, but it's nothing that we don't bring upon ourselves, and I think we do look back at it fondly.
And I think one of the greatest things about PHS, especially in the area, is that we have so much room to be able to have those accomplishments. You know, like, at PDS, they limit number of APs they can, we could take. And like, I think it's really great that PHS recognizes the potential that we have as students. And I think it's really important that they continue to allow us to be able to, like, keep pushing those barriers, I guess.
That, that's great, and thank you for elaborating on the data. And also, that confirms a few other comments about choice and the opportunities that Princeton High School affords, and that is something that kids love and truly appreciate, all of the extracurriculars, all of the leadership opportunities, and certainly all the course offerings. And so some of the actions taken, there, you know, I think we heard from Mr. McMichael about the Rocks program, strengthening student voice. I know Ms. Burge is doing a lot of sort of listening sessions with Bell's Schedule Survey, Empowering Student Council, and then aligning support service with student enjoyment and engagement. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
You know, I think this time last year, we raised some concerns about how some of the behaviors of kids weren't, wasn't so kind. And part of that had to do from effects of the pandemic. And you've really, like, embraced, if you all see out there, it says, what does it say about being kind? I know it says, it says, if you can be anything, be kind, right? And so thank you for your leadership, and that's important. And I think what'll be really interesting in a few years is to see how the middle school kids are interacting after we have implemented all these SEL programs. kids are interacting after we have implemented all these SEL programs at elementary school. But thank you very much for your leadership, we appreciate. We're very fortunate to have you. Thank you. All right, now, we're moving on to Nikolai and Maya. And we put you ahead of Mr. Bolden, in case after this you would like to go home. No disrespect will be taken.
Oh, boy. Well, we missed last meeting, because senioritis is a dangerous, dangerous thing. No, I was expecting to miss it, actually, because I did have the date wrong. But I thought it was going to be while I was in Italy for the school choir trip. And that is part of the good news for PHS, is our arts division, I guess, has been doing so well. And we went on this trip to Italy, and the choir was singing in a bunch of cathedrals. And it was a really beautiful experience, and a lot of kids learned a lot. And there were minimal shenanigans.
Thank you.
And in general, Mr. Lenahan, he's doing so well. We had Groundhog Day, the school musical, and it was with a live orchestra and everything from the production of it to the performances. It was wonderful, like, we're doing great in the stands, drama competitions. And just recently, student council, we're putting together PHS Got Talent, which is going to be great, in March 28th. Yeah, it's going to be lovely.
Is that the pack?
It's at the pack.
Pack, what time?
Yes, I think seven.
Seven.
I'll get back to you.
All right, let me know if we need tickets.
Absolutely. No, y'all.
I hope someone's fundraising.
Exactly. But that's an important thing for the student council. We've been trying to get schools spirited up all year. We met with other student councils of local schools, and they all just have a, like, these councils have enough money to be, as a council, donating to organizations, whereas we are trying to get people to come to our events. And so that's something we're working on. But after scheduling a few events and then canceling them, because not enough people signed up, we've kind of like finally agreed to just do these events. And we figure if we do them well, right, it's going to build. And in a few years, they're going to be well-attended. And already, I think this PHS Got Talent is looking like it'll have a good turnout. So excited about that. So much, so much. School lunch continues to be great. We had a ramen bar the other day, which was awesome. Mr. Johnson, he's my vice principal, and I got an email from him saying, "Come to my office." Hello! And then I kept reading, and it said, "You're not in trouble." And I was like, "Oh, I'm in trouble." And I went there, and it turns out, he's just taking like a half hour to meet with every student who falls under his designation. I thought that was beautiful, and like, we just got to talk about life, and that was really cool. And I don't know if I'm... As for good news, I don't know if it partisan to call this good news, but as someone who brings a coat to history class every day because of air conditioning, I was glad to see that the referendum passed the way it did. Happy about that.
Onto other good news. So like, I think Dr. Foster just mentioned, we did celebrate Black History Month. The assembly was amazing, as usual. We had a lot of really talented students come out and show their heritage, show their appreciation. And it was just really great to see. It did go over a little bit, but I sat, I said just a few words, like, I was... I definitely wasn't too upset about that. And this week, actually, we have Asian Fest, which, you know, I'm part of usually. I would dance this year. But it's always really great to see that we're able to celebrate our culture and celebrate what makes us part of us at school. Another thing that we, as student council, have been continuing is the forum with Ms. Burge. We've had three meetings so far, and we've been able to talk about some of the issues and kind of like our thoughts about certain things at school. So one of the main topics we brought up was the Bell Schedule. And I think we had mostly positive. There are some mixed feelings about it, especially the 90-minute periods, which is to be expected. But I think Ms. Burge was definitely very open to listening and hearing what the general student body had to say. And yeah, so we're going to continue working on getting more student output and hopefully having them show up to more of these and have their voices heard. And then finally, for academic integrity, we'll continue to work with Ms. Burge on this. And we're hoping that maybe some kind of committee can be formed, like, similar to what we do with student council for like prom or for different events, form like temporary committees, and we're hoping this could be more of a permanent one. But yeah.
That's great. Make sure you do that before you leave. Make sure Ms. Burge sets it up before you go. Tell her you won't leave until it's done. Thank you both. I hope you are having some time to take some breaths as you come towards the end of your senior year. I know spring break is coming, and I just hope you have a chance just to relax and enjoy some time without some pressure.
This quarter's been lovely.
Not too much, not too, like, I should, not too lovely, like, no level-three absentee letters, right? No, Ms. Kendall didn't say that. No, 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 Ms. Kendall. No, 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 no. She wants you to enjoy this time, but like, in school. Yeah. But we're really grateful for all that you do for the kids and how you're bringing everything along, and look forward to seeing you and your talents on the 27th. 28th. 28th. Yeah, well, you know somebody, like, just make sure she lets me know. Oh, in the back. But thank you. And seriously, if you want to get going, we understand. Mr. Bolden will not take offense.
I will not.
And with that, Mr. Bolden, the 25, 26 tentative adoption of the budget.
Yes, so the budget is due to the state tomorrow because of the holiday on Thursday. So this is the tentative adoption. We submit it to the state, they review it and get back to us, and then our final adoption, the budget hearing, if you will, is April 29th. It's a little outline of where we're going to go. "We promise to prepare all students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of global society." That's our promise to our students and our community. Strategic planning, I'll skip over this since Dr. Foster did such a great job. Zero-based budgeting is our goal each year, to start from zero and build up to try to eliminate waste as best we can. These are some of the things that make Princeton Public Schools really unique. Small neighborhood schools with comparatively small class sizes. Princeton University, a world-class research university in our backyard. A large number of students' programs and opportunities. A large number of student support services, really experienced teaching staff, programs that are well above the state minimum. We also have a charter in our neighborhood, which is unique for a district like us, and our commitment to equity. A budget calendar, we do go over this, you can see the highlighted. Tonight's a tentative budget adoption, as I said. They're due tomorrow to the state, and then the hearing will be on the 29th. These are some of the accomplishments we have passed referendums recently. I have it here as referenda, it was always an internal argument about the plural of referendum. We've decided on referendums, but clearly, I missed my own thing here. So super important. The large one we just passed on January 28th, we're issuing debt a week from today. Improving pedagogy with rolling out new data tools and improving multi-tier structures for support, which help our students who help need. It's been a big focus the last couple of years. We're utilizing grants from Princeton University and the state to offer extra support and tutoring for our students. And we did implement a new enterprise personnel payroll and accounting software package in the last year. So it's been a heavy lift. The budget drivers, really, so, you know, meeting student needs. More students needing extra services and out-of-district placements, as well as maintaining small class sizes, really drive our budget. Inflation has slowed, but there's certainly a lot of uncertainty in the economic environment right now. We are having pressure on our healthcare costs, specialty RX, and increased widespread usage of GLP-1 drugs. And we are continuing to focus on maintaining and improving our facilities. This is the calendar tax bill. You can see that the pie is sliced up. The 2024 calendar year, slightly a higher amount went to the county, and that decreased our percentage of the tax budget, the overall community tax burden, if you will. We look at our tax levies, but basically, on the left, you have the General or Operating Fund. It makes up 93% of our budget. And even with the bond referendum, which has brought us to just over our last peak in 2021 for our debt service or our capital side of the balance sheet. We talk a little bit about our asset valuations. We have this done every few years by insurance. For our insurance purposes, we can see that over the last four years, our replacement value of our assets, our buildings, the contents, site improvements, has increased significantly, 25% over the last four years. So we really are increasing our focus on maintaining our facilities, super important to delivering educational services in the community. We're talking about our debt service next week. We're issuing $89 million in bonds. The interest rate market has stabilized, it's ticked back up recently. We have three other bond issues outstanding. This brings us a little bit above where we were four years ago with our debt service. This is a graph of that. As you can see graphically, what I just stated, we're going to be here. So we were here a little bit higher. The taxpayer impact, so the tentative budget for calendar '25. So the town collects all taxes, New Jersey, and then passes them through. So to us, for our school tax, we're on a fiscal year, June 30th, estimated total levy of $94 million. The asset, the assessed valuation of town has ticked up almost 1%. So that helps to deflect, even though the 4.7% estimated calendar year school tax levy, just the school tax, not the town or the county, would feel like just over 4%. So the increase in the asset valuations, the assessed valuation, spreads that over a larger base. So that's good news. You can. That's school tax on the calendar year, so it's only half of the increase for the debt. But so it catches up. Correct. And this is kind of another way to look at it. You can see here, the increase for the fiscal year is 7%, but of the calendar year, it's only spread over half. We can see here that the burden to our taxpayer will go up about $433 for the average taxpayer. There's a chart here that shows how it would affect individual taxpayers based on the valuations. Of course, if people rent, they pay that through their rent. So it's, you know... This, we're looking at our general fund tax levy growth versus our in-district enrollment. 2.91% is the operating tax levy increase that we're proposing tonight and would be adopting on April 29th if nothing changed. Supposed to be out there anyway. But this shows our, the increase on the debt service, 7.27%. So it has ticked up, but over this time period, it's under 3% a year, compound annual growth rate. We look at our banked tax cap, we really don't have much. We're going to generate a very little amount this year on a little bit of unused healthcare waiver. Our fund balance is ticked back up to the highest in recent years. Our capital reserve, we put back money into our capital reserve. Here, '24 was the last year that was audited. So we're in better shape with our fund balance. This is a breakout of our operating budget, how we spent our money for calendar '24. You can see that 82% is salaries, benefits, and charter. So it only leaves about 18% left for everything else, aside from those three categories. Insurance, special services, transportation has ticked up quite a bit in recent years. Another way to look at it, we show here the other 4.85% of the total budget. We have insurance here in light blue. This is other, which is about only 4.85% of the total budget. So we have very little discretionary funds to spend. We have maintenance and custodial. Transportation has gone up significantly, out-of-district tuitions. So this is our tentative adopted budget tonight, what we're looking at. This is compares, I started looking at this a couple, I look at a lot of things, a lot of times, but trying to portray all the costs, including salaries, in here. And you can see the different levels of growth. This is our estimated actual '25 and '24. Here in the gray are areas of sensitivity to our cost structure. Student services, transportation, and benefits are the areas where we're seeing a lot of inflationary pressure. These are operating revenues. Local revenues make up 93% of the district's revenue, so only 7% comes from state aid locally. The biggest piece is the tax levy, 81%. The next would be cranberry tuition, Princeton University contribution, some other tuitions, and miscellaneous income. And then fund balance is 4% of the proposed budget. These are big picture movements year-to-year. Try to even isolate further. You can see on the revenue side, most of the increase of our budget in the last four years is tax levy, and the university contribution has helped significantly to offset the inflationary pressure. You can see down here, the same effects, looking at student services increases. Transportation has gone up 11% over the four years, and that's a compound annual growth. So that's 11% each year for four years. So that's a lot of pressure. And those are really the drivers. We're trying to keep salaries under control. And usually, our state aid has increased, didn't increase this year, but usually that goes in tandem with charter. And this year, we did get a slight state aid decrease, but charter tuition is flat also, so that helps to offset that decrease. This is our adopted, tentative adopted budget for the year. We are planning on taking almost $800,000 in healthcare waiver. Here, you can see our state aid decreased 3%. The state shifted the formula. The biggest, the largest decrease any district would receive would be a decrease of 3%, which is what we got. But then you can see our, you'll see on the next page, that our charter stayed kind of flat and actually is forecasted to be a little less than this year. So that's not a bad thing. Revenue side, interest income has helped us a little bit over the, so the offset to... So some of the inflation is a little bit higher, short-term interest rates. School districts can only invest in very stable, nothing longer than 13-year maturities, government bonds or agency bonds, so, you know, really stable things. That's helped a little bit. And then, of course, the university, you can see, has helped their contribution. They do inflate that by 4% a year, so that's a good thing, too. And those are kind of the big pictures on the revenue side. You can see here, you know, how important it is to maintain our salary and benefit costs to the overall budget. And we've had a little bit of pressure with special services costs. Those are hard to manage in the short term. And let's see, what else jumps out at me here? School supplies. We've basically been flat-funding school supplies since I've been here, which is starting to have a little pressure. You know, we're worried about some of the tariffs and all those things. I thought paper costs were going to be going up, and they may go up later, but they just did a bit, and they actually came in flat. But even though we're able to maintain, you know, no increase, that's still, I think, pretty good compared to our peers. So we really appreciate our schools for being efficient that way. You can see here the transportation costs increase, significant pressure there. Those are kind of the big picture movements of our budget. Happy to take questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden, that was great. So a question that I hear a lot lately, given the federal environment, is, how much money do we get in federal aid?
So for all intents and purposes, it's a little over $1 million. And we get IDEA aid is the biggest chunk for us that goes towards special education tuitions, out-of-district tuitions.
So about $1 million?
A little over. And then we get some title grants. However, that cannot go to offset regular operating cost supplement versus a plant is one of the principles. So it's extra programs a lot in the summer, some extra things that we do. So it would have an effect, but IDEA would be the biggest effect if, I assume you're asking if, you know, the federal government can eliminate or minimize the DOE.
Well, let's say, you know, they wanted certain philosophies to change, and it was contingent on state funding, and we said, "No, we're good." You're saying we would lose around $1 million?
Correct.
So that's about less than 1% of the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Adam.
Are we looking, though, at deficits? Again, my concern, just when my own going over the budget is... Again, my my concern, just when my own going over the budget is, we have a volatile future. I think we're kind of on the edge when it comes to money coming in, money coming out. And how do we look at reduction, reduction, and we're gonna look at reduction in staff? Is that something that's going to come up? I think it's important to talk about. I know there's some plans in place possibly, that, because again, I looked at our Moody report too. And it talked about, you know, again, funds, again, basically money coming in, money coming out. We're on a very thin margin.
Yeah, Moody's just did our our dates, our debt service, whenever we issue bonds, Moody's is our debt rating, rating agency. Standard and Poor's is the other one in the in the in the area, in the in the country, I should say. So they maintained our triple-A status, which was good. But of course, they do look at our fund balance, and they compare us to the whole country, because they rate bonds from municipalities across the country, and New Jersey has very conservative rules, so we're not allowed to maintain the fund balances at other states. So and of course, they look at our free fund balance, so if we tied up too big of a percentage in capital reserve, they would ding us for that. However, if the the more free fund balance we live in, in this state at least, at times, governments have, governors have come in and taken some of that free fund balance, so it's a balancing act there. But yeah, you're right, it's important to, you know, maintain, you know, a balance there.
Can we just take a step back? Are we considering any staff cuts?
No, we are not considering any staff cuts. What we always do is try to maximize our resources, so we look at efficiencies. And the other thing too is we look at sometimes if there's a retirement, maybe repurposing a position that is more needed. And so that's kind of how we maintain and support our staff. But we also know our staff, you know, with the referendum as it expands, we're going to need staff. So we want to just really maximize what we have.
Thank you.
And also just to say, we we don't have a, we balanced the budget, we were just presented with a balanced budget.
I just think this raise, we have contractual costs, inflation, just from my understanding, the numbers I'm looking at, I mean, we can't go into a dissertation. No, we might have a, we have a deficit looming possibly, and we might see a contraction, I just think that has to be said. That's what I, that's what, if I'm wrong, hopefully everything could work out, but I I plan for the worst and hope for the best. I don't know what kind of governor we're gonna get either, we get, I don't want to get partisan, we get a Republican governor, he might have a different view about the budget too. All these things might be happening, it's happened before in Princeton schools, we have incredible financial resources though. And if I can say this team, I see it as like coaches implementing a new offense. I like what they're doing from the infrastructure, from from learning, elementary school, core classes, getting to grade level by fifth grade, all that's important. Our teachers are getting raises, but I'm just telling you, we got inflation. We have construction costs that might be going up, we have teacher raises that deserve, but we have to pay them. So we're on an edge, and I feel, and I just have to say that publicly. And last thing though, just maybe as a Princetonian, even though we can't change the world, economics are the way they are. We are kind of losing our our middle class and low our middle class, and it's just a reality, I understand that. But we have to, and I'm not asking for proclamations to change that. But besides schools, we have a community, and we're gonna be losing, I mean, people I grew up with, you know, who make the heart and soul of this town. Our black community, well, the one I knew is like disappearing. But I guess that's, that's reality, you know, I'm not change phobic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, all right, great job, Mr. Bolden. All right, moving on to our first public forum, public comment on agenda items and non-agenda items. Have a list of people who signed up, we'll go through them, and then anyone else who would like to come up and speak. First up is Erica Snyder, just if you could please keep your comments to three minutes and just let us know your name and the street you live on. Thank you.
I appreciate you telling me that every time I come up here, Daphna. Sorry for my voice. My name is Erica Snyder in Lawrenceville Road. Most of you know that I am an advocate for bilingual education, I'm also an educator, and that my family moved to Princeton specifically for the DLI program four years ago. We were told that after Community Park, a bilingual social studies class and an appropriately rigorous Spanish class would be the curriculum for the middle school. This past fall, the bilingual social studies teacher took a leave of absence and was not replaced, leaving three grades of Spanish immersion classes without a teacher. The year-long courses were replaced with a semester-long course that was not a comparable substitute, and in my son's case, did not deepen his language skills at all. On tonight's agenda, we see that the social studies teacher will not be returning. As a parent, I'm here to ask that you start the search for a teacher immediately for the middle school social studies position. These students cannot afford to lose another year of language acquisition due to inadequate programming. As an educator, I am perplexed by the lack of clarity for a program that is ten years old. How is there no clear path from pre-K through high school for these students? Having a vertically aligned map isn't too much to ask. Why is it a mystery that completing, why is it a mystery what completing the program means? Since the seal of biliteracy was removed, what is the end goal for students? How are there curriculum maps that are incomplete with low-level essential questions that then are not taught or assessed in class, or in some cases, there are no curriculum maps at all? This includes for English language learners. As a supporter of bilingual education, I also hope you intentionally encourage English language learners from Spanish-speaking backgrounds to take advantage of the amazing opportunity to learn and explore content in their native language. Immersion, whether the primary language is English or Spanish, should work both ways and benefit both communities. Parents want clarity and for the district to fulfill their promises. This means we need better leadership and oversight of the program. Please do better for the students that have chosen to commit themselves to this program. It would be really wonderful if the district committed to the program too. Not with words, but with actions of hiring a teacher for the bilingual social studies middle school courses, creating clear and concise curriculum maps that parents can understand and hold teachers accountable to, and putting renewed energy into the leadership of the district-wide program. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Violeta Medina from two three two Montlucas Road. I would like to speak about the cap in CP for incoming kindergartens in DLI. Last year, there was a waiting list, there were nine families who couldn't access the program. This cap creates the biggest inequality in the district. For the kids, it causes that the kindergarteners in CP are in classes of twenty-two versus classes in thirteen to fifteen of other schools. For prospective CP staff, there is no warranty that their kids could be able to join CP. For the parents, it breaks the tenet of equal access of educational opportunities for their children. It provokes that there is a criteria that gives priority for accessing these CP DLI slots. I am a mother of an aspiring kindergarten that I would like to enroll him in CP DLI. Let me clarify that the criteria, as far as I'm aware of, living in the CP catchment area, siblings in school, Spanish speaker, put my kid at the top of the list. But the fact that the criteria widely benefits me doesn't prevent me to highlight how unfair for other parents are. I would like for the board to please reconsider increasing the cap to sixty kids and create three sections in kindergarten CP to avoid having to enforce an unfair criteria of enrollment and to leave people out of a program they want to join. I would like to also bring another topic, the future construction that will occur in our schools. I have heard that in this hall, in this forum, it has been repeated that elementary school students will be fascinated by the construction equipment. I agree with that statement, but as a licensed civil engineer, I am very alarmed at the levity in which this topic has been discussed. I would like to stress that construction sites injure, construction sites name, construction site kill. In two thousand twenty-three alone, one thousand seventy-five construction workers in the US went to work, but they never made it back home. Professional, much better trained than any person in this this room were killed because safety measure fail, because safety protocols fail. Exposing hundreds of small children to a construction site that fascinate them, that attracts them, is always a risk. And it shouldn't be considered that it has entertainment value. If enlargement of the school capacity is a necessity, the duration, the how and the when of the construction happen is still a choice. So I please urge to all the decision makers in this room and to those who advise them to take this risk into account. Thank you.
Next up is Kush Chodary. Kush Chodary? Did I say that right? Okay, good.
Hi, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Kush Chodary, I have a fourth grader in Community Park Elementary School. My family moved from New Delhi, India, to the Princeton School District specifically to send our child to the DLI program. Because we believe that bilingualism and biculturalism is a superpower that our children possess. And it produces citizens who are open to students and and adults of other backgrounds and respond to a world of difference with enthusiasm and empathy as opposed to fear and ignorance. And these are the values that we want to inculcate in our own children. So even though I don't come from a Spanish-speaking home, I do come from a bilingual and bicultural home. And I think it's extremely important that we send our children to bilingual and bicultural schools. I would like to reiterate what Erica and Violeta, what Violeta said about our concerns about the limits that are being placed to enrollment. Many of us moved to this district because we wanted to send our children to the schools, to the school. And so I think it's essential that we allow all parents who made this choice to be able to send their children to this DLI program. So please consider expanding the kindergarten sections to three sections so that all students can come in into the program. We also would really like to see a commitment to bilingual education through the whole school district. Not only at CP, but in the middle school. We have concerns about the curriculum and also the staffing, as they have said, as well as in the high school. We would like this to be an integrated part of the program at Princeton Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Mordkoff.
Good evening, David Mordkoff, one hundred Jefferson Road, my daughter is in third grade at at CP. I want to reiterate what my, the previous speakers have said about the importance of the the DLI program here. We moved from Brooklyn two and a half years ago, my daughter had been admitted to Spanish immersion program in Brooklyn. We chose to move here to Princeton in order to, for her to be able to continue that same type of educational program. And she's now half, you know, more than halfway through the program, and are concerned with the lack of a clear path as we move forward into the, you know, the upper grades of the elementary school and then into the into the middle school. And I think it's important that the board consider, as I said, increasing the cap for the grades below my daughters at this point to allow more students to to attend and to participate in this program, which really, I think, draws people to this district. And especially as the new apartment complexes open up, you're gonna have more people, there shouldn't be an artificial cap on the on the CP enrollment. And then on a more minute level, something at at CP, last year, the the budget changed from a full-time art teacher to a zero point six equivalent art art teacher. And this is in no way an indictment of the new art teacher who is doing a fantastic job with a very limited amount of time, time that she has. But last year, a bunch of us raised this concern to the board before the final budget was passed. And we received an email that said, you know, we cannot justify a full-time art position. Community Park students will continue to have the same amount of art instruction as every other PPS elementary student. And while that might be true in terms of the number of minutes in the art classroom, the level and quality of the art instruction that the CP students have gotten is well below that of the other elementary schools. And that's not because of the teacher, it's because she's only a zero point six, and she barely has time to deal with each of the classes that she has. My daughter pointed out an extremely minor disciplinary issue in the in the classroom, in her in her art class, and I went to speak to the homeroom teacher about it. And she said, I don't know that I've ever seen the art teacher, and that's not because she's not here, it's because she's a zero point six, and she has to spend all her time in the classroom or barely trying to put together her program. So I asked the board that when this budget comes back for review, after hopefully the state approves it, that you consider allowing, increasing CP back to a one point zero equivalent for the, a full-time position, one point oh for the art teacher to truly allow the the students to get the the same experience that the other elementary schools do with with a full-time art teacher. Art is really important at this age and and beyond, and I think the CP students are not getting what we told they were. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak at the public forum? Please state your name, spell it for us.
You already know my name.
Yeah, but we need it for the minutes.
I'm Michelle Tuck-Ponder, and I am, I live on Laurel Circle, and I'm here representing Princeton Parents for Black Children. But I want to preface my remarks by offering gratitude and congratulations to Matt Bolden. We are really grateful for you. You've been a great partner to us and very helpful, and I have personal feelings, but I'll express them to you privately.
Thank you.
The Princeton Parents for Black Children's mission is to advocate for equity and support for all black children in Princeton public schools. We recently sent a letter to all of you Board of Education members, but we thought it might be a great opportunity for us to read salient portions of this letter communicated to you. Dear Board of Education, having recently learned of yet another resignation by a black PPS staff person, we are writing on behalf of PBBC to express our concern and alarm about the exodus of African-American staff in PPS over the past three years and the harm it causes to our students and community. Between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, Princeton public schools appear to be a welcoming place for black women to lead and excel. The positions of superintendent, principal of Riverside School, a seat on the Board of Education, and supervisors of math, science and humanities, as well as several counseling positions were held by black women. Today, only two black women remain in administrative leadership at PPS, and one of the two black counselors in at PHS has decided to resign. Friday was her last day, citing what has been described as a toxic environment for both students and staff of African descent. I won't read the part about Princeton's history, I think a lot of you all know what that is. But I'll go on, PBBC is acutely aware of the challenges faced by our PPS black staff and administrators, which includes underrepresentation in leadership and curriculum, stereotyping, bias, tokenism, and lack of support from the district when challenged by vocal parents and community members. This is demoralizing and wrong. In good faith, these individuals accept positions in our district believing that job performance will earn the trust and confidence of their students and community only to learn that they will be endlessly scrutinized by parents and the district administration while white staff are largely exempt from this burden. In addition, efforts to empower our students to advocate for themselves are met with resistance from some principals who openly support self-advocacy efforts from white students. Initiatives to support under-resourced students are overly scrutinized, denied, and amounted very few, while the district happily supports international trips and AP classes to further the hopes and dreams of privileged students. Both of these examples of resistance and denial should be front and center for the Equity Committee, yet what progress has been made? So I'm going to stop reading from there and just point out that we spent some time talking about the collective priority too. Wellness, inclusion, and support for all. We, as black parents, are very concerned about the departure of Bethany Siddique from the staff at Princeton High School. She was a counselor and a social worker. When in her absence, Pulse, which is a group that was started by Shirley Satterfield to support black and brown girls in their experience at Princeton High School, the Minority Student Achievement Network, and the Diversity Council are left without leadership and rudderless, which leaves our students who have to struggle to be, to advocate and come together and find a friendly place or a place where they feel appreciated without any recourse. That is unacceptable. So our question, our ask is, when can we expect to hear about how those positions are going to be filled? Who are our students going to look to for for leadership? And how are they going to be able to see themselves in our schools when what we have been experiencing is a mass departure of black people in leadership positions? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak at public comment right now? Go ahead.
I wish I had gone first. Thank you. My name's Leanna Johnkey, and I live on Linden Lane. And I also want to start with gratitude. I've gotten just a little, little insight into the amount of service and time that you all dedicate on the board. And so I'm just very grateful for that. I am a DLI educator myself. I'm certified DLI teacher, so I'm obviously an advocate for the program. I too also moved here for the DLI program. And I want to share a story that when I first moved here, I was, you know, doing the last walkthrough of my house. And the person who was telling me about Princeton and how exciting it was going to be to live here, let me know that we were zoned to CP and immediately said, but you can get out of that. And so since I've been here, that wasn't the only comment that has been shared with me, that there seems to be a dark cloud, unfortunately, over CP. I, I personally believe it might have to do with a little bit of our Princeton history and maybe some of the previous comments that we've heard. It's hard to pinpoint that, but especially also given the increase in residents that we expect to have at the shopping center. How can we remove that cloud? How can we really look at the program in such a positive light? Where in my DLI program, families would cry to get off the waitlist, where it was such a value and the gift that we all know that it is. So that's my, this piece about DLI. But I also wanted to speak about the increase in class sizes at CP. I was an educator kindergarten and first grade. My best year of teaching was in 2010. It wasn't just because I was much younger. It was a lot of different factors, but the biggest one is that I only had 19 students. I was able to really connect with those students, some that I'm still in touch with today, who are much more than my height. My most challenging year of teaching was in 2015, where I had 27 students. I had a co-teacher who was there with me the whole time. But it was the most frazzled that I was feeling as a teacher. I was like the duck, working hard with my feet moving underwater. But it really does impact an educator's day-to-day, where just that change from 27 to 19 greatly impacted me, where I can still look back on those years and distinguish that. I also wanted to speak as a Black educator as well. The first time I spoke at the board meeting was after the data was shared for Black and Brown students who were failing kindergarten science. And as a science kindergarten teacher, I still feel emotional about hearing about that data. That is very real and also part of our history too. So the increase in class sizes at CP will undoubtedly hurt those students that we, we, I know are seeking to support even more. And then the sec, the last piece I want to share about is just as a Princeton community member. It really does feel that no matter how wonderful the DLI program can be, there seems to be a community history that we need to start rewriting. And I ask that the board just take those steps and maybe be that change so that we can see what the next chapter holds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
How's it going? Good evening. I know most of you, Jason Carter, I'm a, born and raised in Princeton, graduated from Princeton High School and physical educator now, 22 years. I had Nikolai in my gym class. You've come a long way. I just wanted to echo Michelle Tuck-Ponder's words. So I sat in this room in 2017 with Ashanti Thompson and Steve Cochran and a bunch of other Black educators. And we talked about how we could make change for the district. And we formed a group called Beacon, which was Black Educators Affirming Coalition Operating Networks. That was our acronym, myself, Dr. Barnes, Olive Childs. And, and we would meet every week. And this was, again, unpaid, just like the board members. And, you know, the volunteer jobs are always the hardest. And we would talk about how we can make it better for our Black children, right? We felt that they weren't getting enough support. We felt that they weren't getting seen enough. And from that, we formed PBBC. Veronica Forman took that. And then we had meetings with Lou Goldstein. And then Lou Goldstein passed the baton to Mike Volpe. And they said, we're going to hire more Black educators. We're going to hire administrators. We're, we're listening. And that did happen. And that was 2020, and there was George Floyd. And they changed the name of Princeton Middle School. And then Princeton Unified Middle School for a year. And I felt that this was a really welcoming place. And I felt that we were being heard. And I felt that there was change happening. And I think over the last couple of years, we came out of COVID. And the, the one thing I say is, like, the kids, as a teacher, they, they know when you're not looking, right? They kind of know when you're not looking, like, is, is anyone, is anyone looking? And we're here to just to say, we're still looking. All right, we're still looking. And we did see change. And I understand that progress is not linear, right? You take two steps forward, we take one step back. But I think we're taking a step back right now. And I just, what did you, what is your name? Leanna. And I really like what she said is, for being on the right side of history with the board. And I think right now is a critical moment where we can make some decisions, especially with the budget passing, to really make change. And think about like the young children that you could be affecting years from now. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, Mr. Bolden has a letter to read.
Christine Blumauer, CP, second grade mom. After seeing overcrowding at GP in Littlebrook the last, past couple of years, it is now CP's turn to face overcrowded classrooms. That is because a cap is artificially placed on DLI enrollment, which, to be clear, appears to be disconnected from when actual construction and expansion will occur at CP. The quote-unquote swing space argument does not hold and should not be used to degrade the academic experience of CP children nor the working conditions over dedicated teachers. My requests, requests to the district and board leadership are therefore simple. First, increase DLI cap from 44 to 60 at K-level entry and reopen a third K-classroom. Currently, our 2K classrooms are 22 each. When K-classrooms average 15 to 16 at other schools, and all other schools have 3K classrooms. Last year, nine students were not admitted because of a cap at 44. And so lifting the cap will also enable the district to meet demand where it is at, considering a growing student population overall. Second, reopen a third, first and third, second grade section, again, to ensure parity in academic experience and teacher workload across the district. Short of that, our current K and first students would continue to suffer from large classroom sizes and their teachers. Two, others should have three sections in each grade and smaller class sizes. Third, keep three third-grade sections. Third grade is the only grade that still has three sections at CP. Current CP second graders are in classrooms of 23, when the averages in other elementary schools seem to be around 18 to 20. Thus, the disparity amongst schools is substantial here too. We must prevent them from being in overcrowded classrooms again next year. Fourth, reopen a third, fourth grade section. We currently have three third grade, third grade classrooms with each 18 students. Having them in only two fourth grade classrooms will yield classroom sizes of 27. Again, inconsistent with classroom sizes in that grade at other elementary schools. Finally, reopen a third, fifth grade class for the same reasons as above and considering this year's fifth grade class sizes, which were at 23 and 26 respectively.
We're going on to, sorry, Adam J. Bond, Reston to Make Some Bullying. And then we're going to Board Committee highlights. And we're going to start with that.
Okay, long-term planning met on the 13th of March. We heard from our architects and planners who are coordinating with the town and working hard with our administrators to develop preliminary schedules for the 2025 referendum projects across four schools, with PHS HVAC and the bleachers to be started out this summer. The bleachers will be completed this summer. We look forward to sharing updates with the board and the community as the preliminary project timeframes take shape. And our next meeting is on April 24th.
Thank you.
Ms. Kendall, I, I think the HIB is an action item. I believe it was, unless I made a mistake. I think there was someone, yes. No. Daphne Kendall? Beth Barron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Ari Mizel?
Yes.
Chris Antarpio?
abstain.
Catherine Laura?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bolden. So going back to Board Committee highlights, and who's doing operations? Okay.
Hi, we met March 5th at 8:00 AM on Zoom. The public, as always, is welcome to come to our meetings. We began, as we have been, with updates from past referendum projects. So we got detailed reports, not only of the projects that are ongoing, but what will be taking place this summer. But I wanted to highlight today things on our agenda because Matt has been a busy beaver this month. And we have a lot of things that we're going to be approving on our agenda. We're going to be approving a contract that refers to the 2022 referendum for the PMS roof top replacements to do planning for that. We're going to be hiring a solar energy consultant, which, as we always do in our meetings, we highlight sustainability. And this is our first step to the exciting steps that we're going to be taking toward bringing solar to our district, which we're all very excited about. And Matt's been really working us toward getting to that position. We also, we're going to be approving things for electric buses, which also enter our sustainability. We're not quite sure how they'll be financed. We're waiting for grants, which could come through. But the board is, wants to go forward with acquiring two buses and charging stations for that, which is a very exciting development. We are going to be this summer doing the first project for the 2025 referendum, which will be the bleachers at the high school. So that is on the agenda for this evening. And finally, which I'll highlight, we're going to be doing work, which is partly paid for by the last referendum and partly from our maintenance budget on the PHS basin. And we're going to be resurfacing and re-grading the tennis courts to make them last for at least five to 10 years. So these are just some of the projects that Matt has on our agenda tonight for approval, which you'll see on the agenda. Our next meeting is April 9th at 8:00 AM, and all are welcome to join us on Zoom.
Thank you, Susan. Next up is Personnel with Mara.
The Personnel Committee met at 8:30 on Thursday, March 6th. We discussed a variety of personnel topics, including nurse coverage and rates and the enthusiasm, the exciting prospects that our team saw at the TCNJ Job Fair. Tonight, we're going to be voting on four job descriptions, which is really just updating the information in those descriptions. And we also have the pleasure, we already did, I guess, of welcoming and approving Margarita.
But she's still here.
She's, she's a trooper. She votes, yeah. She deserves that cake.
You're going to fit right in.
Our next meeting will be closed on Thursday, April 10th.
All right, thank you. Next up is, uh, Policy.
Yeah, Policy.
Are we all leaving for kick now?
Yeah, we can just keep going. Policy, for anyone who wants to know. Policy met on March 5th. We reviewed the policies which are on tonight's agenda. And we will next meet on the 9th of April.
Thanks, Beth. Student Achievement with Eleanor.
The Student Achievement Committee met on Friday, March 14th at 10:30 with Debbie Bronfield, myself, Daphne Kendall, Chris Antarpio, and Susan Kanter in attendance. We first heard an update on our partnership with Dr. Solange Lopez-Murphy, our TCNJ professor-in-residence, who's helping the district address the disproportionality in the numbers of Hispanic students who are classified as having specific learning disabilities. At issue is whether multilingual learners' academic difficulties stem from language gaps or from disabilities. It's important to tease out the causes of individual students' challenges so they can be appropriately addressed. And Dr. Lopez-Murphy is working with our staff to help us do this. We also heard an update on the ongoing pilot of a new possible English-language arts curriculum for our elementary schools. Our current ELA curriculum, Teachers College Reading and Writing Workshop, is no longer being supported. And in the fall, a committee was convened to identify a new curriculum to meet our needs. We are now piloting Arts and Letters, a brand-new knowledge-building curriculum from the makers of the well-known Witten Wisdom Curriculum. The pilot has not yet finished, but so far, the feedback is positive. And a decision about adoption will be made later in the spring. After that, we went into closed session. And our next meeting will be on Friday, April 11th at 10:30 on Zoom, and all are welcome to attend.
Thanks, Eleanor. And I hear you have an update about the Equity Committee meeting.
And I do, I do. This is from Debbie. The Equity Committee met on Monday, March 10th. And Dr. Angela Ceso-Sentz shared a presentation about investing in our staff. We discussed many ways and opportunities to recruit, hire, and retain skilled, diverse staff despite the growing teacher shortage. We discussed the goal of investing in people, investing in our staff by supporting them with good onboarding and mentoring and learning about our strengths and weaknesses from exit interviews. We discussed student teaching, red tape for certifications, and other ways to be proactive with hiring. And our next meeting will be Monday, June 9th at 6:00 PM on Zoom.
Thanks, Eleanor. All right, moving on now, we have Policies L1 for first reading, Policies L2 for second reading. Then we're going to retirements. We just want to wish Joanne Mitchell, Peggy Thompson, and Pete Vasquez all the best as they have submitted their retirements. It's about 60 years of experience that we'll be losing. And then next up, we have resignations. And just wanted to highlight one that I'm very sad about.
Matt, don't, don't go.
And so Matt's been here for about six years, but in Princeton years, about 42. You were an integral part of planning for several successful referendums. And you saw the implementation and completion of dozens of referendum projects that improved the safety and comfort for everyone in our school, school buildings. You put up with all of us, me for the past three and a half years and before that, Beth for three years. If that's not enough to drive anyone out of the district, I don't know what is. But I'm going to miss your sense of, I'm going to miss your sense of humor. And, but we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
All right.
So much.
Beth has something to say too.
I'd just like to echo what Daphne said and say that Matt Bolden has given his all to this community over the past six years. He ensured budget transparency and accountability to fund our mission despite a pandemic and significant inflation and, at the same time, expertly planned and oversaw multiple bond issuances and related maintenance and construction to ensure that our school facilities remain safe and supportive of students and staff. We will terribly miss your deep expertise, tireless dedication to kids, and patient smile. And we wish you all the best in your next, next chapter.
Thank you.
How much, I haven't seen patience, but okay.
I think it's patience.
Yes, I'm new to the board, but I know some history. And Matt and other people here really provided excellent infrastructure and really balanced this school district and, I think, stabilized it and set it on the right course. And I guess maybe you would, I've never seen, you're, you always seem patient and able to answer questions. And at the same time, you balance like five different things in your head at one time. So it's, and you have encyclopedic knowledge, it seems, as I've been learning about the budget. So I wish you wouldn't go, but.
Thank you very much.
Susan, and then you.
It has been my pleasure to serve with Matt. We kind of joined the board at the same time. And he has always stayed true to his values. He made sure the finances of our district are always designed to support students. And that's always been his mantra. He'll leave us better in every way, better financial systems, better building maintenance for safety, a referendum record of oversight and prudence, and a focus on sustainability, that it was always as important to him as to our community. I'm going to miss Matt a lot because, one, I need Met fans to support me. But I'll miss his friendship, but we'll always, you know, we wish him well and whatever. Has his new endeavors start.
Thank you so much.
Mara? As usual, Susan and I think alike, so I'll repeat a few things that she's said. Matt, you will be sorely missed. It has been a pleasure working with you. Your knowledge and expertise has been indispensable to the district. You leave us in significantly better shape than when you came and how you found us. And we're grateful for that. And in all your decisions, you always put the kids first. Thank you. Told you. Thank you for your dedication. We wish you nothing but the best. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
It's really nice. I really appreciate it. This is a really hard decision. It was based on a desire to kind of relocate. You know, the kids are almost all grown up. Big Jake is on his own, getting promoted, moving to Chicago, and Lindsay's almost done with college, so we're going to move up to North Jersey. And these five and a half, almost six years have been, you know, a growth experience for me, and this community is wonderful. The board is wonderful, and we have great staff here. And it's about processes and controls as much as anything, so I think it's important to keep that momentum going forward for the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt. All right, moving on to M3 Appointments, M4 Personnel Item, M5 Leave of Absence, M6 Curriculum Instruction, M7 Student Services, M8 Job Descriptions, M9 Athletic Appointments, M10 is an action item. Can I get a motion? Mara, second. Ari?
That one's a consent.
Yeah, it's, I had sent you an email about that.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me go, hold on.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all good. Take a motion?
The first motion was Mara, the second was Ari.
Great. Daphna?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Beth Baron? I don't know why I'm reading the first names. I don't do it this way. Beth Baron? Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield? Oh, sorry, she's not here.
Still not here.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Ari Mizell?
Yes.
Chris Santarpio?
Abstain.
Catherine Lara?
Yes.
I thought this was the other settlement agreement.
Oh, shoot.
That's what I was saying. It was, this is the other one. You're good on this one.
I don't know which one this is.
Yeah, it's down below.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I made a mistake.
That's okay.
My mistake.
So we'll undo that.
We'll undo that.
This is consent.
Never mind.
I got you.
All right. M11 Substitute Student Placement, M12 Six Period Compensation. We're moving on to the N1 NJ DOE 2526 Preschool Expansion Aid, and 22526 Remote Learning Plan, and 3 Research Project. Moving on to Special Services, O1 Princeton Speech Language and Learning Center Revised. Then moving on, P1 Financial Reports, P2 Fire and Evacuation Drills, P3 Adoption of the Budget, P4 Travel Expenditure, P5 Architectural Contract, P6 Professional Services Contract, P7 Goostown Communications, P8 Electronic, Security Electronic Access Contract Award, P9, is it RWP? Virtual Server Upgrade Contract Award, P10 PHS Bleachers Purchase that Susan mentioned, P11 Formal Bit Award, PHS Basin and Tennis Court Site Improvement. P12, can I get a motion to table that, please? Mara, second. Beth?
Is that unanimous?
Do we want to call it? Are you going to call it?
Sure. Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
I'm still abstaining.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Ari Mizell?
Yes.
Chris Santarpio?
Yes.
Catherine Lara?
Yes.
Did you want to change your vote?
Yeah. Okay. It's okay. Moving on.
Oh, no, abstain.
Yeah, P13 Electric School Bus Contract, P14 Grand Application Acceptance, P15 66 Kilowatt Bidirectional Fast Charger, and then P16 Settlement Agreement. Can I get a motion?
May I make a comment about the, the electrical bus thing?
Sure.
The only thing is, I'm for it, and I'm for the pilot program, but I just, people should know that it might, we talked about possibly moving to Westminster Choir College. I don't see it in the future, but if we did, it might cost money, because we would have the charging stations at Valley Road, and then we'd have to move them again to Westminster Choir College. Is that correct, we just, we discussed? That was like an issue, and that's, I thought, and I just thought people should know that might happen. I don't think it's going to happen, but it is.
And, and they were pretty easily movable, Matt?
We, yeah, we did discuss that in committee. We would have sunk costs in the installation of the equipment. The equipment could be relocated if the administration headquarters were to move in the future. So, you know, we'd have to deal with that.
Right, but nothing's planned at this time.
Additive cost.
Right, there's nothing planned at this time, and we wanted to move forward with the installation.
No, I want, yeah, if people should know.
We've tried, no, we tried to balance out.
Where are we, M16? Did we do that?
Correct. And I didn't get the motion.
It was Mara and Beth. Yeah.
Great. Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Ari Mizell?
Yes.
Chris Santarpio?
Abstain.
Catherine Lara?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. P17 Registration, Travel Agenda, and then moving on to our next public comment. Oh, there's one public hiding over there. You want to come talk to us? Nothing? Thank you. We appreciate it, because there's cake, and you picked us over, you picked us over cake. Well, I'm going to remember that. Moving on now, R1 Proof of Consent Agenda Items. Could I get a motion? Chris, second. Mara?
Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
That's everything, the budget, too?
Everything.
Oh, yai, yai.
Did you want to bring something?
Mara Franceschi?
Well, I mean, I, the budget's happening anyway. I just was considering, yeah, yeah. No.